I'll call this regular council meeting of the village of Grammont and order at 7:30 PM. With us for prayer this evening is Pastor Ruth Fear Parker.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you tonight for this beautiful island. We thank you for the great weather that we've had. We thank you for the people that are involved in looking after the roads and for Bonnie who's in charge of this team. And we pray for the team. We pray for wisdom and energy and vitality. And, Lord, we pray today, we think of Susan. We pray that you'll be with her. We pray, we know that you're the God of all comfort, and we pray that you would just wrap your arms around her at this time. And we pray as these people continue to do work for this island that you would continue to bless them. And we give you all the praise for using your name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I want to start off the opening remarks by acknowledging that Counselor Ballantyne lost her husband late last week and just reiterate, as Pastor Ruth said, that she's in our thoughts and prayers, and we send our sympathies to her. I also want to offer congratulations to Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, who got married just after our December meeting, so I think we should congratulate him. I only have another couple of things for opening remarks. One is the Fundy Salmon Recovery. That's a tongue twister tonight. The salmon that's raised out in Dark Harbor, Parks, Canada, and the other parties that are involved are going to be here on the island on January 28th. They'll be doing a presentation in the evening for the general public. We'll have some announcements go up, but just so anybody who's watching might put it in their calendar. Just because they've been out there for the better part of a decade and really, we haven't talked a lot about what it is that they're doing out there, but they're doing some really cool things. And I think it would be good as a community if we learned a little bit more about what is happening here on the islands. So that will be on the 28th, so stay tuned for the times and place for that. And then the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that the construction is ongoing at the hangar out at the airport. If you've been out, you'll notice that it actually looks like a building. There's walls and the semblance of a roof. So things are coming along, and hopefully, we might make the end of the month to have the plane inside if things go according to plan. So it's nice to see things moving along out there. So with that, I will move on to item number four, which is disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none, we'll move on to adoption of the minutes. We have the minutes of the regular council meeting of December 2nd and the special meeting of December the 12th, and those are in the packages.
I make a motion to adopt the minutes from the regular council meeting on December 2nd and the special meeting December 12th.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Additions to the agenda. I've got a couple of things under the bills to pay for the General Operating Fund. There's a Dutchman Contracting for the transfer station for $21,275. For the General Capital Fund, is that 17-2? Yeah, okay. That would be Brunswick Engineering, and that would be for the airport hangar for $12,920.25. And then under transfers, which is item number 18, it's a transfer of $11,716.45 from the airport line of credit to the General Capital Fund. And then for closed session, 19-2, there was a request to add Financial Public Works.
Could you give me the amount for the transfer again?
For the transfer is $11,716.45. So 11716.45. No problem.
And I would move to adopt those additions to the agenda.
Heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Corporal Walsh isn't able to be here tonight, but he sent an email, just an overview, so I'm going to read that, if that's okay with the group. So it's a brief report for the month of December. The Grammont and RCMP had a relatively equal comparison of investigational matters this year in comparison to 2023. As was noticed, the RCMP performed some check stops across the island for the purpose of traffic enforcement and impaired driving detection. There were no impaired drivers detected during this period. As the year 2024 is now in the past, vehicles displaying a red inspection sticker in the window or a red plate tag on the rear are now expired. The motor and public should take the moment to check their vehicles, ensure that their inspection, registration, and insurance documents are up to date. And lastly, a question was asked about individuals plowing snow across the highway. It is an offense under Section 69.1A of the Highway Traffic Act to place or put snow over or upon any highway. The offense carries a minimum of a $292.50 fine. Just a few notes from the RCMP for December. I'd ask if you have questions, but I can't answer them, so I'm not even going to give the opportunity. Moving on to old business. 9-1 is the 2025 budget. CEO Chris Reiner to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As everyone can remember, just before Christmas, I sent that email out that we had a bit of a miscalculation in the budget submission. It wasn't so much the budget, it was actually the warrant. We had forgot to add in the Outer Island warrant of $4,100 and change. So we need to rescind the motion 187-24 from December 12th that had the warrant totaling $3,516,223. And we need to read the new one, which has the correct warrant at $3,520,368.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to rescind the... Would you have a motion?
You heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. So we need a new motion, correct?
We need the new motion with the correct numbers, and Counselor Sturgeon has those numbers.
Perfect. Counselor Sturgeon, do you have your mic on? Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to say therefore be resolved that the sum of $4,841... No, $4,841,559 be the total operating budget of the municipality. That the sum of $3,520,368 be the warrant of the municipality for the insuring year, and that the tax rate rates for the municipality be $1.1828 for Grammont and Island and .7500 for the Outer Islands. And that the council orders and directs the levying by the Minister of Environment and local government of said amount on real property liable to taxation under the Assessment Act within the municipality of Grammont and.
You heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 9-2 is the Village of Grammont and Boys and Girls Club MOU, and that was tabled from the December meeting. Discussion, comments, questions? Counselor Sturgeon.
Madam Mayor, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, what this is Counselor Ballantyne's... Maybe it would be in our best interest, since she's the spokesperson, to table this for another month unless there's something that turns up in that regard.
I think it's been ongoing for a while, so I don't think another couple of weeks is probably going to be the end of the world. So if that's okay with the group, we'll table this till the February meeting? Okay. All right. Moving right along. 9-3. Yes? Do we need a motion?
We need a motion, one second.
Okay. All right. Is that your motion?
That was my motion to table.
Okay. You heard the motion. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 9-3, Mill Hill Road. Counselor Layton to discuss.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, fellow councilors. We're back at this again for another little discussion, I guess. I think most people are familiar with the situation up there. The first 700 and few feet are undefined, I guess, as to the right-of-way. Who owns it? Up past 700 feet, you've got the Village of Grammont and. We own the right-of-way. It's ours. It's established. But it's been a gray area. When I brought it up at last previous council meetings, it was recommended that maybe I go around and get some signatures and bring the landowners all together. But I've kind of looked into that, and I'm absolutely not qualified at all to write up a legal document and get anybody to sign it. I've got a lot of information here. All the information that pertains to the properties up there, there's about 300 pages here. And just to go through that is painful. And I'm not qualified to interpret it or make a recommendation as to what we do. So I'd really like to see... I mean, I believe that we're a progressive counselor. It was passed over the last time that the island was paved. It was petitioned before the local government, but it was denied. And here we are 40 years later, and they're still wanting to get this established, the right-of-way established. So I'd like to make a recommendation or a motion, I guess, that we proceed with establishing the right-of-way. I'm not... We're not talking about paving. We're not talking about widening. We're not talking about any of that. That's another conversation. But just let's establish this right-of-way and move forward from there, I guess. Any questions?
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Okay. So you heard the motion from Counselor Layton. Do we have a seconder?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that because I would like to ask some things and such.
Seconded by Counselor Sturgeon, and I understand you have a question.
Yes, Madam Mayor. It's that... This has been discussed many times before.
Absolutely.
And my memory's not quite as good as it used to be. And so we're going to be seeking legal counsel, I guess, to make... See what properly needs to be done. And as Counselor Jordan Layton... Jordy says, it's got to be vetted, you know, to make sure that all our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So is that the intent, I guess?
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's just a legal exercise. I mean, I think it's pretty much established in these documents that there's a tax number or a PID number, but there's no tax levy against it. So it would assume that the province owned that piece of property. But it just needs to be documented and looked into and established, I guess. I mean, we've got a successful business up there. The machine shop there is there. I mean, everybody on Grammont and that's fishermen uses that, and they bang their truck up there to get serviced. And I mean, it's just something that's been lobbied for years, and I think we should settle it and move forward progressively.
As you previously stated, this is just establishing a right-of-way. There's no decision on paving or anything like that.
Nothing.
Okay.
Counselor Green?
Yeah. Part of what Wayne was saying, I was just going to make sure we were not trying to go around our subdivision bylaw, which defines responsibility for developing roads in a subdivision.
Counselor Toll?
I was thinking along the same lines, because I think that's something that would probably have to be passed to the PAC to... After it's been looked at by the RSD to see what the recommendations would even be for that.
Anyone else? Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to investigate the legal options to establish a right-of-way for Mill Hill Road. Is that essentially the...
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any more question? Counselor Green?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'm just... The right-of-way is there. It's been used for decades now. What does establishing a formal right-of-way? What... How does that advance the improvements or the use and enjoyment of that road by the people that use it?
Well, it's establishing a 66-foot right-of-way, which would match up to the 66-foot right-of-way that we already own. That piece of property is... It's... It has a PIN number, but who... The ownership is probably the province. Some people say they might own it, but I mean, nobody's paying taxes on it. So it's just a legal exercise, I think, just for the lawyers to look into it and validate where the right-of-way... Yes. Yes. Absolutely.
Counselor Turner?
I'm wondering too, like, what is the advantage of doing that?
The advantage is their high... The road would be serviced. They'd get snow removal, fire, ambulance, all the other things that everybody else enjoys. I mean, there's probably $4 million worth of houses up there, a couple million dollars worth of businesses, and everybody should enjoy that same privilege of fire protection and ambulance service. But if it's not plowed and you can't use the road, then, I mean, it's a liability, I think, for the people that live there.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. Any more question before I call for the vote? Counselor Boyd?
So this is just instructing staff to seek legal decision on this?
Well, I'd like to have it established whether... I mean, if the lawyer can sit down and go through these documents, say, yeah, we got a case. Let's register the right-of-way to the Village of Grammont and. We'll take ownership of it. It'll be ours. What we do with it after that is another conversation for another day.
Counselor Turner?
But is it? That's my question. Like, are we going to be responsible to do all the upgrades and everything if this is established?
There's... Once it's established, there's funding available through the province where we can bring that up to a legal 66-foot right-of-way according to the RSC's...
The building, their subdivision?
Yes. Subdivision bylaws.
I think we're all struggling for words tonight. Anyone else? Counselor Green?
My last kick at the cat. If... My remembrance of that is that's a one-rod right-of-way, which is 16 and 1/2 feet. If we're going to make it 66, then some people are losing land, and we'll be into an expropriation to do that, I'm assuming. And I don't think this is a cost-free exercise, is where I'm going. If it's just a moot point, we're spending a lot of time, energy, and money for something that has a gray area as to what the improvement's going to be for the user, I guess.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Sturgeon, then Counselor Toll?
Like Counselor Green said, my last bite of the can, I guess, or apple. But I... You know, I would like to have it established because in today's... Especially in today's legalistic world, it's not just enough to say, well, we've always done it. I mean, I think it's best to try to see what's involved here. That's all.
All the landowners are in favor of it. Last I talked to them. So, I mean, it should be a smooth... That's why we need some legal advice, I guess.
Counselor Toll?
Okay. So this is my last kick at the can, too, is I think that what we're looking for is a variance on that whole strip. So we need a piece to make it the same width, so which means you have to apply for a variance on whoever owns it to widen it, narrow it, whatever, when you want something special done, as far as I understand, which means we'd have to take it to the PAC or to the RSC to go through that, to see who owns each of those pieces, and find out what exactly is on the maps and what the bylaws say that we can do to expand it or not expand it. And that's a service that we're offered, anyway.
And I had the RSC. I'm not going to ever pretend that I dug all this stuff up. It's the RSC that put this all together, and we've got a valid point, I think, here, but it just needs to be established by a lawyer.
How are we all doing now?
So just a little confused here yet. If we're going to do the things you're talking about, which I think needs to be done, so does that go against the motion? Or does this goes very long with it?
I think that is... Maybe the motion needs to say that we need to go to the RSC and see what is allowed with the variances and what we can do. And then we have a meeting at PAC to go over what the decision is from them and from us.
I don't know how the RSC would...
Well, they put together our requests. Like, if a person wants to do something on the property or make the property a little different, you have to apply for that. They do up the paperwork, and then we all have a meeting about what we want to do and what they think they should do. And then the decision's made, but you can do that. Because you have to know who owned the property and if they're willing to give up that piece to make that variance work.
From the RSC's point of view, this is the information. This is what they've provided, and it's up to council how we proceed, I guess. But, I mean, of course, we've got some hoops to jump through as the subdivision bylaws and all that. But it's...
Okay. I know I'm not supposed to wade into debate, but can I offer a suggestion? And you guys can all feel free to shoot her down. Xander Goepen from the RSC is coming the day after our next council meeting. I just looked it up on my calendar to talk about the rural plan and look at changes. He is also pretty good about explaining some of the legalities around that. I wondered if it was worth talking to him when he's here before we venture into it, but I honestly thought he was coming before the February meeting, not after it. So that may not be the best suggestion. So you can do with that what you will. But right now, we have a motion on the table. Are we ready to vote, or do we want to discuss? Or what's the wishes of the group?
Let's vote. Let's put this to bed.
Okay. Everybody... Everybody ready for that? All those... So near.
So what I... If I'm reading this right, and Jordy tell me if I'm not, we need to get... We need to get legal opinion on what the next steps are because we, A, don't know who owns this property; B, if we want to own this property and take it over, then there's going to be, as Counselor Green said, maybe have to get land from people that are currently using that land and all the process that goes along with this. So this is kind of like the first box checked in a long list of checkboxes. Is that kind of where we're at?
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. Almost final call, or are we actually ready? Can't see anybody leaping forward, so I'm going to say, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Okay. I was going to say something about clearly we don't pre-discuss the issues before we get here. 10-minute open session is next on the agenda. All right. So moving along. Next up is new business. 14-1 is the Planning Advisory Committee. Counselor Toll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It has come to our attention on the PAC that we have two members who have reached the end of their term as of January 1st, one being Adam Parker and the other is myself. We are both willing to extend our term to January 28th. So I'm just looking for a motion to extend those terms for the PAC.
So would somebody like to make a motion to extend their terms to January 2028?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to extend the aforementioned names' terms to January 2028.
Heard the motion of Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Okay. Now for my favorite part of the evening, approval to pay the following invoices from the General Operating Fund. Sullivan Sales and Service, the DTIGM 002, for $13,353.81. Griffin &amp; Sons Construction for the Dump Truck Rental, $3,105. McGinnis-Cooper Legal for Dog Issues, $7,884.84. McGinnis-Cooper Legal for Global Steel, $4,344.52. Island Home Hardware, the December Statement, is $5,556.81. Lift-O for Forklift is $11,304.82. JIL Engineering and Construction for Playground Equipment, $12,100. Fundy Contractors, Winter Sand, $3,697.71. Hot Bottom Bates for the Fire Department Shipping Container, $6,325. Route 776 Tire &amp; Auto for Backhoe Tires, $2,671.68. And the Dutchman Contracting Limited for the Transfer Station, for $21,275.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pay these invoices from the General Operating Fund.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? Counselor Boyd?
Is this a second shipping container, or is this a payment on the first shipping container?
It's a second one.
Right. Is that...
For the Fire Department? They spoke to Chris to vote it to the department. It's coming out of last year's budget.
Okay. Perfect. And Backhoe Tires. So is that in our agreement with Dutchman?
Transfer Station.
Transfer Station. Okay. Sorry. Sorry. That one skipped my line. Yep. Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. From the General Capital Fund, we have Silk Stevens Limited for the Aircraft Hangar Building, $27,697.75. Griffin &amp; Sons Construction for the Airport Concrete, for $39,410.50. And Brunswick Engineering for the Airport Hangar, $12,920.25.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pay for the General Operating Fund. The invoices that you read.
General Capital.
General Capital. Sorry.
You heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question? I'll... Oh, sorry. Counselor Green?
Silk Stevens and Brunswick Engineering both do engineering work on the same job, is it?
They did. The Silk Stevens was the building design and engineering. The Brunswick was the geotech report, was all the groundwork.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 18 is transfers. The first one is to transfer $144,645.88 from the Airport Hangar Line of Credit to the General Capital Fund.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
You heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. And then the second transfer was from the... For $11,716.45 from the Airport Line of Credit to the General Capital Fund. Heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19 is closed session. We have two items. Financial is Village Equipment and another financial for Public Works.
Make a motion. We moved into closed session.
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Toll. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. I'll recall this meeting to order. It's 8:30 PM. We were in closed session to talk about, um, financial. The first thing was Village Equipment, and we have two motions for that.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we purchase a sander for the truck of Recreation.
You heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into negotiations on the purchase of some heavy equipment.
Heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Toll.
Second.
Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. And 19-2 financial, that was Public Works.
I would like to make a motion, uh, that we go ahead with the purchase of a new 2024 truck for the supervisor.
Heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those, yes?
I have one. What, I'm just worried about the, the date on the truck. What if it's no longer available? That's, that specific one, I'm just wondering if we're handling it or something.
Sure, yeah, no, absolutely, yeah. I would, so how do we do that now?
Would you like to?
I would like to make a friendly amendment to that motion and just say that we authorize the CAO to purchase a truck for the supervisor.
You heard the motion, the friendly amendment? Okay. I'm not even sure, I've lost my words again. Um, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Our next regular council meeting will be here on February 3rd at 7:30 PM.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you very much.